Well, good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for joining us at this town meeting for us to be able to discuss together our return to campus-based operations plan. That plan was put together by a broad group. As you know, I created a startup task force that was chaired by our provost, Dr. Prabhat Ajayla, and our vice president for human resources, Mr. Curtis Powell. And they have worked, as have all of us, very assiduously to engage many people across our broad community to create and to finalize this plan. The plan was finalized and we submitted it, as we were required to, to the New York State Department of Health yesterday, as well as posting it on the web. And so this afternoon, I wanted to share with you some of the key elements of that plan. But let me give you a bit of background. As I indicated, the task force did collaborate broadly with people across the university, engaging faculty, students, staff, other community members, public health officials, and others to try to make sure we were clear about the issues and the challenges we face here on the Troy campus, across the capital region, and with those who will be coming to our campus from across the US and potentially from outside the country. Now, the plan includes very strong health and safety protocols for reactivating our campus-based operations. And we've always kept our focus on health and safety of our community members, but also pedagogical innovation, operational effectiveness, but especially limiting risk and managing consequences. We've based our plan on guidance from New York State, as well as our own internal assessment of what we can do and must do to ensure, as much as we can, the safety of all members of the Rensselaer community. As we've done that, we've also created pathways to respond if circumstances change. Now, as you know, COVID-19 is a highly contagious disease, and it continues to spread very strongly in our country and around the world. And so we, in a global pandemic, and this is very important, cannot make our campus operations entirely risk-free. And that's why we say that we focus on limiting risk and managing consequences. Now, the pandemic will still be underway in the fall. That's what the outlook appears to be. And unless things get more under control, we could be dealing with a very strong situation in the fall. And so the circumstances could change rapidly, and they could change enough to cause us not to return to campus-based operations. That would be based on New York State decision-making and/or our own judgment about the overall public health situation and our ability to manage within that. And so with that, our plan and our associated protocols could change. But as things stand, we do plan to resume campus-based operations in the fall. In fact, New York State today, our region of New York State, entered Phase 4, which allows us to start up. And as we've done that, we've created a process that we called TIME, which stands for Training, Implementation, Monitoring, and Compliance and Enforcement. And those are the key stages, and we've worked out a very interleaved process of what must happen as we return to campus operations, beginning with training every person who will be on the campus as they return and testing every person. And so with that, allow me to go through a short PowerPoint deck to highlight key elements of that plan. So to begin, let's talk about the overall rationale for the plan. Again, our primary focus is and will remain the health and safety of all members of the Rensselaer community. Because we are in a global pandemic, our focus is to lessen risk and mitigate consequences. We have to anticipate that we could have COVID-19 cases on the campus, even as we work assiduously to not have that happen. Our plan is meant to provide pedagogical continuity for our students. We think it does offer some opportunity for savings for our parents and students because there is less travel. We have travel restrictions that we are putting into place, and we expect to work through what would be the normal semester breaks, because the semester itself for the in-person part will be shorter. And as I've said, the plan is subject to change based on either state guidance, New York State guidance, or our own judgment about the public health situation as it affects Rensselaer. In fact, we will review our plan at the end of the semester, of course, and at the end of the academic year to see, you know, how it might change if we are still in a situation where we need our plan, but also what innovations we learn that we could apply going forward. So let me begin with the fundamentals of that plan. First, it is predicated on thinning out the campus in order to be able to implement the appropriate health and safety protocols. And so the freshmen are invited to be on the campus with in-person instruction for the full academic year. Now, seniors also are invited for in-person instruction for the full academic year, but with the expectation that they would live off-campus. But if there are those with particular vulnerabilities, we would look to help to provide them with appropriate accommodations based on that. The juniors would be invited to have in-person instruction in the fall and would be expected to live off-campus as well, except for those who would have specific vulnerabilities. All the sophomores for the fall would be taught by remote instruction, and so the fall semester for them would be online. Then, as we come into the spring, because of the arch and because we expect that many more of our juniors will have secured appropriate internships and other away experiences versus far fewer ones that we know of in the fall, we would expect and require all the juniors to be away in the spring. And we hope to have them be able to have the internships that they need and deserve, or to do an individual learning experience. The summer following is another opportunity as well for them to either continue the away experience or to secure one if they have not. And we are working assiduously to create those opportunities and will work with every student to help them as much as we can to secure the positions that they should have. And of course, we hope to be, to have a vaccine or at least be closer to one. In the spring, then, all the sophomores would be on the campus with in-person instruction, and then would remain to transition into the arch summer semester here on the campus. The graduate students would be here year-round in the fall, spring, and summer, but again, in off-campus housing. And there's a very structured plan for the return to research, but it would involve staggered hours and staggered use or flipped use of laboratories, as well as a number of other health and safety protocols. Now, here are some of the attendant requirements. Students would need to arrive a little early, and one would be told when to come. And that is really for three key purposes. The first is to have every student tested coming in, unless they've had a test that satisfies, Dr. Lawrence satisfies, our health center or our occupational physician for, and human resources for our faculty and staff. Secondly, to have personal protective equipment distributed, cleansers and disinfectants for their personal spaces. And then, of course, to go through the appropriate training, education, and socialization to our required protocols. We would expect to have an in-place pause at the beginning of the semester in order to get the testing and the training done, and if necessary, any quarantine. And then classes would nonetheless begin, they would begin online if we then moved into the period where they would normally start. And then there would be testing of everyone who has campus access on a recurrent basis, and our intent is to test at least every two weeks, or more frequently as warranted by risk or circumstance. Now, the academic calendar will shift. We, as I said, would start the fall semester with either an in-place quarantine or a pause to get the entrance requirement satisfied with online instruction that would begin when the semester starts. And if we're able to, we'll start with in-person classes, but we've anticipated either possibility. And the in-person instruction then would begin after that pause, but we would have very strong social distancing requirements, rules around activities, curriculum planning, classroom architecture changes, the use of personal protective equipment, as well as cleaning and disinfecting. And I would ask that you look at the specific plan for those specific details. We planned to end in-person instruction by the Thanksgiving, beginning of the Thanksgiving holiday, with no return for the balance of the year. And so that the end semester activities would be done remotely as needed, including giving final exams online. The spring semester would start a bit later, on January the 19th, but would begin, and one might be, students might be asked again to come a couple of days early to begin with the in-place quarantine and/or testing. And again, there would be testing and distribution of personal protective equipment, cleansers and disinfectants at the start of the semester. Again, if there is a real quarantine in place, instruction would begin online during that period, and the instruction will go through the spring break so that we can end the semester and not overlap with the beginning of the arch. Now, our overall approach in terms of our health and safety plan, we refer to as T-Cubed SQ, and that stands for Testing, Tracing, Tracking, Surveillance, and Quarantine and Isolation. And so the testing is predicated on who, when, and how. The who is everyone who comes to the campus unless somebody has positive antibodies, neutralizing antibodies, assuming those tests are available, and give us the results we want. The when would be immediately upon return to campus, and then, as I mentioned, the intent would be to do recurrent testing every two weeks or more frequently on both an individual and a pooled basis as needed. The tracing involves identifying recent contacts of anyone who is ill, test positive for COVID-19, or has been closely exposed to individuals with that. And to achieve that, we are implementing a daily query process that would be every person, but every student especially, would be required to create a log that they would keep of places they've been and contacts they've had. We would be using an app-based approach in an appropriate manner. We also are training our own internal contact tracers. On the tracking side, that what we are really doing is using the contact tracing and building it into an epidemiological model to do broader tracking that would help us to determine if there's community spread. And then the surveillance is based on monitoring this, what's called the basic reproduction number, to see if there are surges developing. And so we would do that by observing community health and epidemiological spread within the Rensselaer community and the larger community, as well as doing surveillance testing of groups or individuals. And then with the quarantining and isolation, we would be quarantining the exposed and isolating the COVID-19 positive cases, and we've identified space on the campus for students residing here if they are COVID-positive. So then to talk about the testing, again, the testing is upon return to campus, and those who are not able to prove immunity, which is probably most people, will be given an appointed time to arrive at a clinic we will have for COVID-testing. Students would quarantine in their residential commons room or apartment if they live off-campus until the test results return, and faculty and staff will remain off-campus until their test results return. And again, I've talked about the repeat interval for testing, which can be more often as needed. Students who test positive would be in university, put into university-designated isolation rooms. We also, on the tracing, intend to, as I said, have people keep a log of their travel and contact history, and then to share that log if they have a positive test. We don't need to see it unless somebody has a positive test, but it would be required at any rate to be reported to the health department for contact tracing, but it allows us to do campus-based and our community-based contact tracing. And so that would be a, come through a daily check-in registry on health, as well as the close contacts and travel. And we would use some proximity app data if it's available and if we think it's appropriate. And that travel history for COVID-positive cases would be reported to the Rensselaer County Health Department. And then for tracking, we would aggregate positive test data to see where the most cases are occurring, and we would also do surveillance testing to try to identify factors that may be contributing to infections or to community spread. And we have an epidemiological model that has been developed by our faculty to help us track internal community spread as well as external community spread, and to monitor this basic reproduction rate. And on the surveillance piece, we would, and some of this overlaps with other parts, we would be requiring all Rensselaer community members to participate in the daily monitoring and log-keeping and keeping a record, not only of their symptoms, but of their travel movements and close contacts, that we would then have you share. The health and symptom data would be shared with our medical center. But the travel and movements and close contacts, we would only ask to be shared if someone becomes COVID-positive. And so we're going to be following the spread of COVID-19 in all countries and across the US as well as locally, because members of our community come from the local area, from across the state, across the country, and from around the world. And we would increase testing if indicated by travel from areas where COVID-19 is still circulating, or if that circulation starts again in our local area. Now, right now, there are quarantine requirements that New York State has put on people from areas with high infection rates, including areas within our country. And so we would then expect to have those people quarantine here in place, and we'll follow New York State guidance on that, but they could nonetheless begin courses online. With housing, we are looking and will reduce our total residential occupancy by 55%. Our freshmen will be housed on the campus and distributed across the campus with no more than two students per apartment and two students per bathroom. We will not use commons bathrooms that have a gang or multiple people using them. Students with COVID-19-related health vulnerabilities will be accommodated in a single room if they live on the campus, and we will not have our Greek houses occupied for the fall, and we will review our experience in the fall and where we are with COVID-19 relative to a decision for the spring. Now, we are very strong disinfecting protocols, where we do expect students who share a room or an apartment to be responsible for basic hygiene and disinfecting protocols, and Environmental Services will provide each room or apartment with cleaning and disinfecting supplies to facilitate cleaning and disinfecting of the space. There also will be training materials that Environmental Health and Safety will provide videos and access to precipio to facilitate the training coming in and for people to have refresh as we go along, to have people trained to our overall health and safety protocols, as well as proper and effective cleaning and disinfecting. But Environmental Services will be responsible for daily cleaning and disinfecting of all common spaces, lounges, study rooms, et cetera, and they will clean and disinfect each of the student bathrooms in our residential commons every day. Now, for meal service, all of our dining halls will be used in a manner to ensure maximum social distancing. In fact, we will have an online reservation system to ensure that spaces do not exceed the social distancing capacity. There will be appropriate signage, as well as hand sanitizing stations in place, and there won't be any tabletop items, any napkins, condiments, et cetera, out there to prevent spread through that mean. Our dining services staff will wear masks and/or face shields at all times, and especially for those who are handling food. And they will be trained in contactless service, and they, of course, will be temperature-checked upon every shift beginning. And so, but the continuous services won't occur, because we want to allow for thorough cleaning in between each meal service. And we want all the students residing here to have a 19-meal-per-week meal plan, and the reason is to be, ensure that there is no issue about hunger, but also it allows us to monitor and protect the students relative to where and how they eat as much as possible. And then with respect to personal protective equipment, everyone will be required to wear the specified PPE everywhere on the campus, except in their personal or individual residences or workspaces. And students in their own rooms won't be required to wear PPE, but you might want to do it anyway, in the sense that a roommate would fall in the definition of family, but it's probably not a bad idea to use it as much as you can. You can bring your own masks, but when there are, we will be providing specific masks for use in all of our instructional spaces. And likewise, for faculty, the same thing, but faculty also and staff will be provided with appropriate masks and/or shields as needed. And again, all Rensselaer community members will be trained through a variety of delivery mechanisms on the appropriate use and necessity of PPE. Now, as far as the academic architecture, we're going to limit in-person classes to 30 students or fewer. There will be social distancing and marked and specified in the classroom. We will be providing a blend of online and in-person instruction, a hybrid model, that can include flipping instructional days, rotating who, when students might be in class versus online, and then flipping it the next day. And as I said, each course will be offered both in-person and remote formats, and that's to accommodate students who cannot attend in-person for any reason, whether it has to do with a vulnerability, health vulnerability, visa issues, or if they are ill but still able to take classes. Students will be, as I said, provided an appropriate mask upon entering a class. We are expected to use face shields, or in some cases, Plexigat glass shields to protect the professor. But the office hours and TA sessions, we expect to be online, and we will use as much as possible AI-based tutors and other means, software-based means, to help with supporting our students. And then the lab and performance-based classes will require additional structuring that will accommodate our health and safety protocols. With respect to the classrooms themselves, each classroom will be thoroughly cleaned and disinfected every night. The classes will be scheduled so that there's a little time at the beginning of each class for students to disinfect contact surfaces as they are coming in and sitting down, and we'll even provide them with a cleaning wipe as they come in to clean their own workspace or sitting space. There will be hand sanitizing stations in every classroom, and we're working to improve and enhance the ventilation in classrooms. And then there are some special considerations. Research has identified a three-stage approach with staggered research shifts and requirements for adherence to all of the Institute health and safety protocols and how that will be done. As you probably know by now, with respect to athletics, the Institute will not participate in collegiate athletics in the fall of 2020, but we expect the students to work out and do the things that keep them in good shape. The decisions to participate in winter 2020 and spring 2021 into collegiate athletics will be made at the appropriate time and in consultation, of course, with the leagues and the conferences we belong to, but especially following a New York State health protocols and our own. And any intramural and recreational programs we have will be in complete alignment with federal, state, county requirements and with our own institutional health and safety protocols. There can be meetings, but other than classes, the gathering sizes will be limited to fewer than 10 people with strict social distancing and the use of PPE and sanitizing activities. And then, as I've talked about with monitoring and mitigation, we will be implementing the T-Cubed SQ approach. There will be education and training of everyone, quarantine and isolation of COVID-19 positive cases and their contacts as appropriate. And then we're going to have training of all on-campus persons and notification of families and others through our university website as well. We will monitor outbreaks in the region and closely monitor the health of our community through the T-Cubed SQ process, and we have designated areas to quarantine or isolate cases of suspected or confirmed infection. We do have a phased shutdown plan that we would implement in the event of a major resurgence of COVID-19. Phase one would be if there are a large number of Phase one would be if there are a large number of positive COVID positive cases that appear among our students and where our own contact tracing and isolation are not able to contain the spread. Phase two would be if there are significant and unchecked growth in positive cases that exceeds our ability to quarantine and isolate and care for our students. In phase one, we would put into place a temporary in-place quarantine, and all the instruction would pivot to remote. So it would be an in-place quarantine with all the instruction being delivered remotely. And we would suspend in-person instruction until the spread is judged to be under control by Student Health Services and Environmental Health and Safety. Now, phase two, which I'm going to run through in a minute, but this could be based on our judgment of our inability to do all we need to do to mitigate consequences. But also, it could be the result of New York State directives. And if we have to go to phase two, which we hope not, we would create a one-week semester break to facilitate the orderly shutdown of the campus. All the work would pivot to a remote mode. And only, as we did before, identified essential workers would be allowed on the campus. And all students then would be asked to vacate the campus within seventy-two hours. And all instruction and research labs would be shut down through our established protocols. Campus buildings would be closed and the infrastructure placed in a secure shutdown mode. And then we would resume classes a week from that date in a remote format. And the semester activities would be completed in that mode. But what I will say is, we do anticipate that there could be students who cannot leave, either for health reasons, if someone is diagnosed with COVID and they're in isolation, or where they're going is not good or healthy for them, or they cannot travel because of some other restriction. And we did accommodate a number of students here during our earlier shutdown. And we, through vigorous protocols, would do the same. But the key messages here are these. That one has to agree to adhere to all of the plan protocols as a requirement to be on the campus, to attend in-person classes, to live in institute housing, and to participate in any institute activities. And our plan is structured to address this moment. It is meant to be as comprehensive as we have been able to make it. But our approach is health and safety, and it is risk-informed. But again, all risks cannot be eliminated in a pandemic. And so our focus is on limiting risk and mitigating consequences. We think that with the collaboration and the compliance of all members of our community, we will be able to bring our students back to give all of them, at least for some portion of the year, an on-campus experience, but particularly wanting our freshmen to be able to come in and have the full introduction to the campus experience, to have our seniors have a senior year on the campus, to have the juniors here in the fall in a way that naturally plays into their having the arch away experience. And then to bring the sophomores here in the spring, where we hope things will be better and where they can then transition into the arch summer experience here on the campus. And so we're doing this to protect everyone. And so with that, I am happy with the leadership team to address questions that people may have. And John, I understand there are people who've asked to pose questions. So if we could have everybody shown so that people can see who will be talking, we would appreciate that. And I would like it where we can see everybody, the whole leadership team. Thank you. As well as whoever might ask a question.
So Dr. Jackson, our first question is from the incoming president of the Rensselaer Faculty Senate, Professor Emily Liu.
Okay. Hello, Professor Liu.
Hi, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Jackson. We're very grateful for the town halls, the more the merrier, by the way. Because this is really an opportunity that we can have everyone on the same page because we see a lot of, we hear a lot of things going on. And many times we feel that not everyone gets the same information at the same time. So it's really important that we can get the messages loud and clear. You are definitely make much more impact statements than us trying to communicate with students and other colleagues and staff members.
I would say to you that I would also urge people very strongly to go to our website. We have a COVID nineteen website. The full plan in all of its glory is posted there, as well as these slides that I just showed, as well as a tabular form. And we try to capture questions that come up on a repeated basis and provide answers to those. But I'm happy to respond to any question you may have today.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. So I'll take some of the questions that we collected. And Yaron will take the other from Faculty Senate point of view. The first question I have is, it's more like a clarification. I do hear some of these answers, but I think you and the leadership team can help to completely clarify it for the instructors. It was mentioned that a large class of sixty above, for example, will have mostly students on campus, if we have that kind of size. This, the class will be divided into two sections, like up to thirty each per class. How is this going to affect the teaching load for the instructor? Meaning, do the two sections count as two or still count as one?
I think that the, that the provost should answer that question. Prabhat?
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Thank you, Emily, for asking that question. I think this is really an issue that will be determined by the deans and the department heads as to how teaching is being allocated to the faculty members. What we are saying is that any class that is more than sixty students does not necessarily have to go to an online format, to an in-person format at all. So it could stay completely online and remote. Even though the students are here on campus, they would be taking that course in a remote fashion. So that is a choice that is left to the department head and or the dean to determine.
Right. But my understanding is that if it is deemed pedagogically appropriate.
That's correct, yes.
A class of sixty could be divided into two thirty section, thirty student sections. But again, as Prabhat has said, that would be developed and worked through each school with the deans.
Thank you. So even for, say, if we divide into two sections, what I understand is if the class is Monday, Thursday, the Monday, one group is going to be in person, the other one will be online. And Thursday, the other group will be in person and the first group will be online. So that's how we make sure that the instructor is going to still have the same load. Is that right?
I think that we're looking at what works for the students. And I think people will work to ensure that the load for the faculty is equitable and appropriate. And and I think that's really the fundamental message. You know, we're not here to answer all the very specific questions about every single course and exactly how that works out. I think the provost will be overseeing to make sure that the load is equitable. Look, to be honest, everybody has a little bit more work to do here in order for us to open the university at all. And so at a certain level, more is being asked of everyone. And including all the staff, the administration, as well as the faculty. And we hope that everybody will work together to deliver the best possible education to our students. But but I do know that the provosts with the deans, you know, are working to ensure that things are as equitable as they can be. But I also hope that our faculty are willing to understand that even when you're looking at delivering a lecture and recording a lecture at the same time, there's a little bit extra there. And we have to do this. If, and otherwise, we can say we won't open at all. And that's not, you know, where we wish to go. Prabhat?
Yes, that is absolutely true, Dr. Jackson. And the deans and department heads will manage that. Plus, and as the president pointed out, I mean, we are asking something a little extra of every faculty member and every person on campus, every staff member. They're all contributing to make sure that we open in a safe manner, that we are able to deliver the best education for our students. I mean, everything that the students have told me is that the Monday, Thursday alternating classes is a good, good approach because it allows students who are on campus to get to see their faculty member at least once a week, if not more. So these are different times. These are difficult times. These are challenging times. And we are trying to make sure that the students get the best experience possible under the circumstances.
Thank you. Thank you, Prabhat and then Dr. Jackson. So the faculty is definitely on board as well to serve the students the best. We all go through the hard times together. My next question is pretty long because there's a lot of background, but there's only just one thing that we want to ask at the end is whether or not the students can simply opt out and attending just online instead of in-person, even though the students are, belong to the group that they should be online, should be in-person. I'm trying to twist my mind. So I'm specifically referring to, for example, the incoming freshmen or senior students who are internationals, and they cannot or don't want to be on campus physically due to pandemic. I mean, do they have the choice that simply opt out? Even for domestic students, they could also say they're just not comfortable, even though they are not unhealthy or having any hidden conditions, but they just don't want to come because they feel, you know, scared to some degree. And for those students, if their choice is they are able to opt out the in-person lesson completely, how do we track and improve the students' engagement and performance? I know that some of the leadership teams are formed already to address this, but I just kind of want to reinforce this and then to make sure there will be a detailed plan to make sure that these kind of students, one, have a choice to opt out, and second, is able to still make engagement and performance plans for them.
Well, let me begin this way. First of all, the university is not a prison. But on average, if a student wishes to matriculate at Rensselaer, we expect them to come if they are part of the cohort that would be on the campus. There will be specific criteria for students to be able to have an exception if that is warranted. As far as engaging those who would be online, a lot of that depends on you, on the faculty, working with the deans to ensure that the pedagogical delivery remains excellent, that it is as engaging as it can possibly be. As well, the student life professionals here already have very detailed plans for how they will engage students who are not able to be physically present to ensure that they know they are part of the community and they have the growth experiences that the student life activities provide.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. My next question is about a group of international students. They are still on campus because of arch, most of them, and they cannot go back to their original country. Do we have a plan to make sure their safety and academic progress?
Well, we kept a number of international students here when we shut down. And and we expect to do no less if they are students who cannot leave in the interim to go back home. So we're not looking to have our students be put into difficulty because they cannot travel back to their home countries. And in some cases, it may be better for them to stay here. And we will look after them with our protocols to keep them safe and engaged. And there may be some who, where it's not wise to go back home because it would then be difficult for them to return to the US. So we have all of that embedded in our plan.
Okay, fantastic. I'm so glad to hear. The last question from me is that we have a suggestion that, is it possible to set up a question and answer channel? I know there's a COVID nineteen website, and I know a lot of information has been set there, but it's better to have something like a feedback and quickly going through for the entire Rensselaer community. The reason is, I mean, I don't think we want to repeatedly say the same information because some of the audience cannot, you know, access the actual results somewhere or just have trouble to find where in the website that that information has been laid. I just hope that there is some kind of a channel that is being set up, probably from the same website, but but there's a question and answer, like people can send in the questions they have and someone from the team will be able to address it.
Well, I would argue that, you know, our FAQs, as we call them, frequently asked questions because even though many questions appear to be different, when you really look at how they intersect, they're really the same. They may be different versions of the same question. And that part of the website is updated on a continuous basis to be able to address new questions as they arise. But let me ask Richie Hunter, our vice president for Strategic Communications, External Relations, to address that.
Thank you, President Jackson. And Professor Liu, absolutely. As President Jackson mentioned, we're continuously receiving questions and having them addressed on the website. With the website, the COVID nineteen website being our single source of truth, if you will, where people can go back, they can see all communications that have occurred. As we get questions from students, they're answered in the student sections. We get questions from faculty that are also answered, not only in the plan and in forms like these, but on the website specifically. And they cover a range of topics. If there are any other questions, as we send out these invitations to the town hall, you can absolutely respond and send the questions in. And we will consolidate and answer the questions as as we can and post them on the website.
Great. Thank you, Richie. Yes, thank you, Dr. Jackson. These are all the questions I have, and especially, I'm so glad to hear that all the questions can be handled on the website. I think it's great that we have a town hall to really tell everybody that the website can be fully optimized. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Dr. Jackson, our second set of questions are from the Rensselaer Faculty Senate Chair, Professor Yaron Danen.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody. Although the time was short since the announcement of the town hall meeting, we did collect a few questions and I will continue with more questions from the faculty. So I will try to read them and sometimes shorten them as they were given to us. So the first one is on scheduling. And the question is, if students are taking both remote and in-person classes during the day, where they will go, when, where they will go when they leave in-person class, and then they need to take an online class, so they must be running to their housing or whatever? And do we need to think about it and accommodate a break between classes?
I think all of that will be handled through the registrar as classes get scheduled.
Because right now, we don't have breaks and the class are sort of, so that's a.
I understand your point and we'll make sure that that gets looked at.
Okay, good. The next question is about teaching. And as we understand, at least some of us had a meeting with the provost the other day, that faculty are expected to teach with face masks and face shields maybe. And it's very hard for the faculty to be there two hours talking like that. And of course, it's hard for the students to hear through all these barriers. through all these barriers. And and in parallel, the class has to be recorded at the same time. So we don't know yet who is going to do that. The 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 suggestion was made that there'll be a microphone in every classroom, and some of the faculty said, how about we have a personal microphone because they don't want to talk to the same microphone in the class, even though it's sanitized. So somebody has to think about that because it will be very hard to teach through all these barrier and record. I don't know how we we're going to handle the recording. Do you have any suggestions?
Well, those sorts of detailed questions, you know, we're not going to answer here, but I would let John Cole respond and Prabhat.
So thank you for the question. We have thought through this a little bit, and we're in the process of purchasing a number of headsets very similar to the one that I'm wearing that has a microphone built into it. And we'll issue these to individual faculty members that they can take with them into the classroom and plug in a USB to a computer in the room, and that will help facilitate the recording as well as the amplification for the faculty member in the room.
Good. This is excellent. So so I'm glad that this is this is addressed. Another question, I guess the last two questions I have are more related to health issues that so the first question was asked, do students and employee medical insurances cover the COVID-19 costs? I guess this relates to testing?
Yes.
Yeah, yes. Yeah, okay. Good. And then the last question. Are we is RPI allowing the alternate tests? I guess for a person to show proof of immunity and also if you get tested in another place, is this is acceptable?
Let me let Dr. Lawrence, I hope he's on, answer that question.
Yes. Yes, we think it will be much easier for people to come to our testing site. However, should someone want to go to an alternate testing site, as long as they can give us the results, that data, then that would be accepted. But I think we're going to make it so easy, we hope, to make it so easy for people to get in and out of our sites that that they won't feel there's a need to go to an alternate site, but we would accept that.
And except that provided the test was within a certain specified period of time.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's that's all I had.
Okay, well, thank you.
So, Dr. Jackson, the next set of questions is from one of our parents from the Parents Council, Susan Lobiondo.
Hi, thank you for letting me be here today. I appreciate it.
Sure, thank you.
I have a lot of questions from the parent group, but I'll I'll try and pick out just a few for now. One of the big ones is the juniors who were originally not supposed to be on campus and now have to look for housing. Will there be any assistance now that there's no on-campus or Greek housing available to them? Will the school help with any assistance in finding temporary housing?
The answer is yes. Let me let Peter Kambarski, the vice president for Student Life, answer that.
Sure, Susan, thank you for joining us on the call and asking the question on behalf of parents. And yes, the answer is we have our staff in living learning specifically in our off-campus commons, working with students. We definitely help some students, and we've already put out a little information. And as Richie referred to, we'll continue to make information available, both on the return COVID information on our FAQ, as well as just pushing out other communication to students through their class cluster. So we we've continued as as the junior classes, questions on Arch or questions on, you know, jobs or housing. We'll continue to work with them through their class dean and through the the group of staff in student life, as well as academic affairs that work with, you know, primarily the junior class or the senior class as they come back to campus.
Okay, thank you. And then along the lines of the question before about opting out of being on campus, if students are in like, say, freshman class and they live nearby, is commuting an option for students who are not in like, say, the sophomores who are not on campus and they decide to move to the area because of time differences or for whatever reason they want to be nearby, will they be allowed to use facilities of the campus?
Let me answer that. The sophomores, no. They would be able to take classes remotely from wherever they live, but they would not have access to campus facilities. Because the whole point in structuring things this way is to de-densify the campus so we can handle things from a health and safety point. Secondly, for students who are who live in the area, we would expect them to come and live on the campus because that actually is a the residency requirement is there, but it also allows us to manage things from exposure and health and safety. And and even though that's a, you know, the the families would have to worry about it, it also would be safer for the families. But to have the students traveling around to come back and forth every day is not what we would expect them really allow them to do. We expect them to be on campus. And our, you know, financial aid packages anticipate that.
That makes sense. And then just one other thing, and then I'll I'll defer.
You can ask a couple more. The faculty asked a lot.
Some parents are are concerned with the, you know, obviously, the, you know, unprecedented times and the protocols in place and the lack of social interaction that there could be some, you know, and and especially for freshmen who are adjusting to everything for the first time, some concern about, you know, any mental health concerns of their children and, you know, will there be additional, you know, situations where they can get counseling even more than they in the past, maybe?
The answer is absolutely. And let me let Peter speak and then Dr. Lawrence.
Yes, Susan, I appreciate that. And I know that both our Learning and Teaching Subcommittee and our Campus Life Subcommittee have addressed those, both in terms of providing the access and accessibility to the services, and Dr. Lawrence will tell you about the accessibility of services, as well as having some specific working groups and conversations, you know, about identifying students who are of concern and who might be expressing, you know, more anxiety or stress or depression. So that is also a top of mind concern for us. We have an intervention team that continues, and the intervention team is continuing to meet over the summer throughout the Arch because I absolutely want to provide that same level of support to our students in the Arch. But I'll I'll let Dr. Lawrence talk about, you know, the the ways in which we support students who, you know, are concerned and have a question or are looking for counseling support.
Yes, you know, besides the way we normally support students, we're going to be looking to have several group meetings, especially with the new students, but all students will be invited online. We want to do that within the first week. So because part of the problem with young students is they don't always seek out help when they need it. So we want to have these extra meetings and contacts and touch points with the students and keep reinforcing, this is how you get our help. This is how you can get us. Because we've all become familiar with how to do WebEx meetings and and counseling sessions now, we can pop in and do those at, you know, at any time, and we're going to make ourselves more available to do those at any time. So we want to stress that with the students. I also sense parents on this call would like to ask for the parents' help. We're going to communicate more broadly and more often with the students about reaching out and asking for help. But if your students be struggling, please direct them to us. Please, we're there. We have the number of staff now to make sure that everyone gets a counseling visit the same day under this new structure that we've instituted. So we want to hear from them. If they're struggling, we want to hear. Our worry is, will they not reach out? So you the parents, if you can help us, but we'll remind them again, more broadly and more often this fall.
Also, we have strengthened the use of our databases and and the use of analytics to be able to spot triggers that can tell us earlier if a young person, if one of our students is faltering. So that even if they haven't come in to see to the counseling center, that we can have an even earlier warning or sense that someone may need help. So these extra sessions that Dr. Lawrence is talking about, as well as ensuring that those who do come to the counseling center are seen promptly and the use of of data in a more intelligent way to be able to spot trends earlier with a person, with one of our students in particular. And we're particularly mindful of that with students who are, interestingly enough, the ones who are first coming in, coming into us from high school. This is a big change. And then also, interestingly enough, with those who are seniors because they they will have a very unusual senior year, and then they're going out into a world with a lot more uncertainty. But it's also important, and that's why we want the juniors here as well in the fall, because they are going out in terms of their Arch experience into a greater, a world of greater uncertainty. And so we want to be able to have these touch points as well as how we actually use the the information we have to to reach them more quickly and hopefully more effectively.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the time.
Well, thank you. And and we are, and I'm here for the parents. So I know it's a stressful time. And Peter is here for the parents. And so, you know, please feel free to to reach out. You know, I have my cabinet. They probably think I'm a nag, but but they have to check in with me every day. They have to, even though we meet all the time, but they have to send me an early morning communication to let me know how they're doing because it's it's a it's a tough time for everybody. And so and I so I can imagine, and I know what it's like as a parent. I have a child too, but he's a little grown now, but nonetheless, your child is always your child. So, thank you.
Thank you, Susan. And let me apologize for not properly introducing that you are the parent of Dan, who's in the class of 2023 studying business analytics, since we're talking about that. So, Dr. Jackson, next up is another parent, Teresa Farrenhelme, and her son Alex is studying aeronautical engineering, is in the class of 2022.
Jackson. So I have a couple of questions. One of them is going to be a clarification. Just when you spoke about the finals, kind of the end of fall semester and finals, is that going to be on the same schedule that initially is published, so that they'll have finals a couple of weeks after Thanksgiving, even though they'll be remote?
Yeah, the semester will end, the actual semester will end in the way that it would, and students would have a study period and all of that. What we're saying is the in-person part of the instruction.
Okay.
And the Thanksgiving break.
Okay, super. And then my other question, I have two more. My other question is in regards to the junior cohort that's going to be on campus in the fall semester for in-person opportunities of learning. And there are probably several of those juniors who will be turning to seniors in measurement of their credit hours because of the credits that a lot of RPI students bring in their freshman year. So in particular, to those students, if seniors are going to be able to have in-person classes, how does that work for that cohort within the junior class that would become seniors, specifically if they're exempt from the Arch? As our son is an Air Force Ratsy cadet, so he's exempt from Arch, but he will, how will that work for those students to have a senior credit hour status but a junior cohort status?
Well, let me let the provost speak to that, Prabhat.
Okay.
So that's a good question. I mean, the few students, very few students were granted an exception out of the Arch, and they were done for a variety of reasons, be it academic, be it athletic. Situation has changed, circumstances have changed. But we are still looking very closely at what is the graduation date for a particular student. We don't want that academic progress to be slowed. So your student should consult with the academic advisor, should consult with Keith Mu Young, our dean of undergraduate education as to what is the best schedule for them as they go forward. That's what I would advise them to do.
Okay, super. Thank you. And then I just have one more question. We're an out-of-state family. Our son will be coming from New Mexico. What is the earliest that you would want students on campus to be able to facilitate all the testing and and quarantine that New York requires? Can you give any guidance on that at this point, or is it too early?
Let Dr. Lawrence and Peter speak to that. Dr. Lawrence?
So we are actually, so classes will begin on August 23rd. We are going to ask some of the students to come back a week and a half prior to that date so that we can get them, starting a week and a half prior to that date, so we can get them tested, their test results back, and they go for their first class on 23rd. So I'm I'm trying to think, I don't have a calendar up in front of me, so I'm I'm not exactly sure what date that is. Maybe if Peter had a chance to peek at a calendar, he can fill it. Sorry to put you on the spot. But I'll try to look at a calendar while Peter's talking.
Yeah, no, let me just say, so we will provide communication to all of our students by year as we give them direction. And we are going to, as you heard Les talk about, we are going to phase in the testing as they come back. And obviously, we want to test the students living on campus as well as the students coming back to take to take classes. So each of that, each cohort will get individual communication. In fact, every student will get individual communication for the day when they'll have their first test. Then they'll be cleared to move into a residence. So we're actually working through all that sequencing as we speak. We have not put out that calendar, so you haven't missed anything, but we will communicate extensively all those dates.
Okay, thank you.
The only complication is that, as you know, New York State has put into place a two-week quarantine for students who come from certain areas. If that quarantine is still in place and 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 affects your your student, then we would have that factored into their being in their residence, but 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 being taking and starting the classes online. But it would not affect when we would ask them to come to the campus.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions. I just want to say, as an out-of-state parent, we appreciate you, Dr. Jackson, and your diligence and dedication and the team you've put together. We have a student attending another educational institution, also out of state from New Mexico, and RPI is above and beyond communication, and we appreciate that. So thank you. I know it's been a lot of hard work and long days for all of you, but makes a mom's heart feel good. So thank you.
Well, thank you. I really appreciate that more than you know. But I also have a really strong team here, as you can see, and and everybody cares so much about the students and about everybody in our community. And so it has been quite a haul, but now the real work begins.
True, true. Everybody stay safe. Thank you so much.
You too. Thanks.
So, Dr. Jackson, the next questioner is from the Society of Families, Darlene Yapley, who's a parent of a student in the class of 2021.
Hi, Dr. Jackson. Thank you so much. I want to add my congratulations to you and your team. It's been an exceptional effort since March, and we appreciate it. My first question is, for those of us that are coming from one of the states that the requires a 14-day quarantine, how will that be addressed in us coming early to campus and the word quarantine, does that mean you can't leave your dorm to get food?
Oh, yeah. Let let me let Les Lawrence speak to that. But but if anyone who's 14, we would be providing food delivery. But but go ahead, Les.
So we have thought about that, Mrs. Yapley, and that's part of the reason our scheduling is not completely done yet because we want to bring the students from those states that are going to be forced to quarantine back a bit earlier so they don't miss as many classes. So we're trying, and of course, those dates are changing with time, so we're having to adjust our plans with time. So we probably won't know the exact date your students coming back until August rolls around and we see which states are are going to be in that group where they're going to be forced to. I also the Department of Health, I've asked them the question, if we have someone in quarantine for seven days, if we can get two negative test results back, would that be enough to exempt them from further quarantine? I don't have the answer for that today. So as of today, we're assuming it'll be the full 14 days. My hope is New York will take a look at those test results and say, My hope is, New York will take a look at those test results and say that these students don't have to stay the full 14 days if we can get negative test results after that first week. But we are playing, we are trying to make our plans around that. I don't know if you want to add anything else, Peter?
No, I think that's, I think it's great detail. And also, just to clarify, the first day of class is August 31st. So I think we were talking earlier about the days when students will come back would be at least a week before that. But the actual first day of class is, is the 31st.
Right. But let me just say something, so that, because it speaks to a question, Darling, that you asked. That is, when we have students in quarantine and/or isolation, we actually have a whole setup where we deliver the meals to where they are. It's, and, and so, so they don't, they will not be starving. And, and there's an app that lets them order what they would like, you know, from a menu. But, but they get to order, and then we deliver the meals. So that way, if they can't go out, and they should not go out.
Dr. Jackson, is that related to people that are on, on camp, off-campus housing as well?
Well, we're going to try to do as much as we can with those who are off-campus, particularly if they are required to be quarantined.
Okay, thank you. And my next question is, for students that are seeking exceptions that have COVID vulnerabilities, is there a process in place now? When will the process be in place if it is not? And what kind of response time can we expect to get an answer?
Dr. Lawrence?
So, Mrs. Yapley, any students who are in that situation can apply through Health Services Now or through Disability Services. Both of those websites are pretty easy to navigate. And you can send in emails, or you, it'll also have fax numbers. If you want to fax this information and not put it in an email in case it's sensitive, you can do that as well. And you can, you can do that at any time.
Okay, thank you. And my last question is, you know, there's been a lot of people looking for housing. And the difficult part is there are yearly leases when, in fact, you're only going to be on campus for maybe three months, depending on what year you are. And that, that seems to be a tricky part.
Well, I would suggest that you contact Student Life, the Off-Campus Commons Office, so that they can work with your student or the students to do as much intervention as we can with the landlords. Because the landlords are interested in having students as opposed to not having any for whatever period. And so, of course, they will start out in a certain mood. But, but we're willing to work with the student, with the landlord. Peter?
I would echo that, Dr. Jackson. I think your point is right. We, we've been in communication with a number of landlords. In fact, I was in Troy recently driving, and I saw signs that said, you know, three-month lease, four-month lease. So I think our landlords have adjusted as we've adjusted. They've been following our plans, and we've been in communication. So, and I would say, as Dr. Jackson said, if you have any questions, you can contact Living Learning directly, or you can, you know, reach directly out if it's a, an academic question to our class deans, or to myself, and any of us on the leadership. If any, at any point, you have a specific individual question that, you know, you want us to give a little more attention to. But, but we appreciate all the questions you've asked.
Thank you so much. You've all been doing an excellent job.
Well, thank you.
So next up, Dr. Jackson, is one of our pillars of Rensselaer, Rob Carney from Campus Planning and Facilities Design.
Hello, Dr. Jackson.
Yeah, hello, Rob. How are you?
Very good. Dr. Jackson, as you know, yesterday, travelers from eight additional states were added to New York, New Jersey, and Connecticut's mandatory quarantine order, pushing the total number of states to 16. I guess my question is, if these quarantined, quarantines continue or expand, how will they impact our reopening plans?
Well, I think in some ways, you've heard some of how we would handle it through our responses to some of the questions that have been asked. The, well, let me, let me back up and say a couple of things. As far as Rensselaer staff and faculty, we do have travel restrictions in place. That, number one, there won't be much in the way of university sanctioned travel. Secondly, if people do travel away, we've already told the faculty and staff that they would then likely be either quarantined, or they would have a COVID test after a certain point when they come back, when we think we could see a signal if they've been exposed. Otherwise, they would have to quarantine anyway for two weeks, because that's part of our own health and safety protocol. So then, if, if we have a student coming from an area where that kind of quarantine has been imposed, then we would handle it the way Dr. Lawrence just described. We would find out if, from, he's working with the New York State Department of Health to find out if, in fact, if we do the COVID test and they test negative, could they be released from quarantine? If not, then we would just have them in quarantine, and they would begin their, their courses online. And so we have that built into our plan. And so, other than that accommodation, we expect to be able to go forward.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson.
No, thank you. That's all you have to ask me?
That was it.
I thought you were going to ask me a really hard question.
Oh, that was it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So, Dr. Jackson, another pillar of Rensselaer, the manager of Student Services in the School of Engineering, Marie Deethen-Back.
Hello?
I am here, Dr. Jackson. I'm trying to get my video going here.
I just saw you fleetingly.
Maybe now?
Nope, try it again. Don't touch it twice.
Okay, okay. Good afternoon, Dr. Jackson. As you know, I'm representing the staff at Rensselaer in this meeting. So my questions are staff-related. In the last, in the last meeting, I asked a question for those staff who are reluctant to return to campus because of health reasons or just because they're uncomfortable. I asked Dr., I asked that question last time, and at the time, Vice President Powell responded that staff would need to have a qualifying documented medical condition in order to be exempt from returning to campus. However, on the bottom of page three of the plan released yesterday, it states that staff members who are able to perform their duties from home will be required to do so. So there seems to be a bit of contradiction there, and I'm hoping that staff can get some clarification and advice on that today, particularly for those of us who supervise others and we're getting those questions. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to let Curtis speak in a moment, but, but let me, I think, give a bit of clarification. In the interest of de-densifying the campus, there are certain jobs, a lot of them administrative jobs, that could be done remotely. And so we will be phasing in how people return to campus, depending upon if those jobs can be done at home. On the other hand, if there are jobs where we deem that people need to be on the campus, then we would expect them to be here unless they had the kind of exemption that Curtis Powell spoke about before. But Curtis, I don't know if you want to add to that.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Jackson, for that clarification. And Marie, what you see in the plan is that we have several individuals already that are working remotely. And as we do reopen the campus back up, we will stagger those individuals back. So that's the reference we're referring to. The other question, in the first town hall meeting you referred to about our high-risk population. The high-risk population are those individuals who have chronic lung diseases, are severe asthma, serious heart conditions, maybe someone who has had cancer treatment, an organ transplant, someone who may have severe diabetes, or chronic kidney disease, or liver disease. These are what we consider high-risk population. Those individuals, and let me repeat what I said the last time, is that we will work with our medical, their attending physician, a medical physician, and our own occupational physician, before we would allow those individuals to come to camp. Now, some of those individuals may be remote. I don't know that yet. But those individuals who we do bring back will have to go through our own protocols, as the president has indicated already, so that they would be cleared to return to camp. But thank you for your question.
So, Dr. Jackson, those decisions that you referred to in terms of who's going to be coming back and who would not necessarily be coming back based on their job description, will those determinations be made at the portfolio level?
Well, there'll be a recommendation at the portfolio level, and then they would be approved through Human Resources.
Thank you. And then just one other question. Many offices across campus, across the academic and student life portfolios, where staff interact daily with students are quite small and don't allow for the social distancing protocols in the plan. So I'm wondering if you have any guidance on that or any suggestions?
I'm not sure that I understand. Could you give me an example?
So some of the academic advising hubs, for example, are big open spaces, and they don't allow for distancing between staff, let alone staff and students. So, you know, if there is adjacent space, would we work with facilities to see if we could expand into those spaces? Or, you know, do you have some guidance in terms of that?
Well, I think how people will be, quote unquote, arranged to work in any space will be according to the social distancing protocols coupled with the use of personal protective equipment. And, and, and so that will be worked out, you know, as people are brought back. Secondly, if the, we also have the attendant requirement of no more than 10 people, gatherings of no more than 10 people at a time. But again, in the socially distanced way with personal protective equipment. And finally, if there is advising and interactions that can go on the way we're interacting, then we think that people should arrange to do that. But Curtis, you wanted to make a comment.
No, you're, you're right. I mean, think about it, Marie. We talked about social distancing and staggering the staff when they come back. We will also establish signage on campus throughout to ensure that if there are 10 or more individuals, we will eliminate that process. So we'll be working with administration in each portfolio to ensure that those protocols are in place as we stagger individuals back, as we service our students.
So the kind of question that you posed is probably one predicated on the usual kind of staffing at a given time.
True, true.
And, and we expect that staff could be staggered on days or, or on weeks or parts of days. That has to be worked out within the given unit, depending on the job. But those things, the combination of staggering, spacing, the use of the personal protective equipment, all of that is going to be predicated on what the specific work is and how it can be done in a way that satisfies our protocols. And so people should not expect that it's going to be business as usual, and people are tightly packed, and so on. That's not going to happen. And so that has to be worked out in a very careful way.
Awesome. Thank you so much. And thank you for including staff in these meetings and giving us the opportunity to ask questions. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, remember, Marie, I've always said that the staff are the great enablers. There is no work in the university without you. So thank you.
Thank you.
So, Dr. Jackson, the next set of questions, we have a number of students here to ask some questions. Starting with our Grand Marshall, Edvith Narayan, who's the class of 2021. And he's actually doing double duty this morning, because his colleague, the president of the Union, Anissa Chonier, is having some bandwidth problems. So he's going to ask a double set of questions.
Okay.
Thank you so much for this time. So I have a couple of questions kind of relating to the medical services on campus. So with increased medical risk, will all the services that we previously had, such as RPI ambulance, health center, counseling center, be operating in its full capacity, albeit in a safe manner? Or were there, are there certain things that we can expect that we won't have in the fall semester?
Dr. Lawrence?
So I, I think as, as far as health and counseling, we anticipate that we will probably have to do a bit more. So not only will we be operating, we will be operating, I hope, at a greater capacity than we have in the past. And that's because we're going to have a respiratory clinic separate from health services, because in case someone were to have COVID, we don't want them coming into health services and sitting down to next, next to someone who's there for an acne visit, right? We don't want to infect somebody. So we're going to have a separate place for that. As far as both health and counseling are going to be trying to schedule appropriate visits over WebEx to make it easier for students, so they don't have to travel across campus and don't have to come in contact with as many people. Of course, if those are appropriate, right? We, we can't do that. For someone who's saying they're short of breath, they're going to have to come in. We're going to have to listen to their lungs. I think the hardest question for me to answer is about, you asked about RPI ambulance services. We're still kind of debating what we do with them, because we don't want to put students at an increased risk for COVID. We do value RPI ambulance's services. They are a tremendous service to our students, as you know. But we're debating, and I think where we are in our community as we get closer to August will help that make the decision. So for instance, if suddenly we're like California is, not that I'm picking on you today, if where we're California is today in New York State, that may make it, make it difficult for us to make the decision to let ambulance services operate, right? Because we don't want to put students at an increased risk for contracting COVID. So I think that's a decision we're trying to, I'm trying to kick down the road a little bit. But as far as health services and counseling services, we anticipate offering you more.
Okay, because I had to Dr. Lawrence's comment. Number one, you know, I follow his guidance relative to what we do with our students. However, I will say this, we would not want to be having our ambulance service transporting patients who are suspected to have exposure to COVID or to be COVID positive. And so that might limit, or in some cases, eliminate what the ambulance service might do. But otherwise, the services we expect to provide, as Dr. Lawrence has said, would be, be greater.
That makes sense. I understand. Now, my next question is kind of talking about mental health. This is an issue that's really important to me as GM. So based on the Student Senate survey data from last summer's arch, I suspect a general decline in kind of mental health in general coming out of the arch going into the fall semester, especially given everything that's happening around us in the world. That being said, I am very happy here that the Counseling Center is going to be kind of in full effect. I'm curious to know, are all the furloughed staff going to be brought back? And another question in terms of the, I guess, how Counseling Center services will operate? Will, will there be any private spaces for students to use if they are WebEx-ing a counselor, if they don't feel safe in their own kind of rooms, if they have roommates and whatnot?
The answer to the second is something that I'm sure that Dr. Lawrence and his colleagues are thinking about and will work out. As far as the furloughed staff, and I'm going to let Dr. Lawrence speak in a second. But as far as the furloughed staff, the answer to your question is, it really depends upon where we are relative to the overall needs and enrollment on the campus, as well as what the overall public health situation is. And, and so I cannot give you a specific answer to that question. We will bring people back as needed, is the real answer to your question. And Dr. Lawrence?
But yes, we would want you to be in a safe space for those meetings. If you feel that it's safer to come to counseling, because you don't want people, the possibility that people can overhear you, we're still going to be available for you to do that. The only reason I mentioned the WebEx visits is because a lot of our students seem to be enjoying that this summer. They like the flexibility and the availability. So, and we've learned, even us old people like me have learned how to use it and enjoy it now. So we're going to continue to offer those services.
That sounds good. And then the last question for me, before I move on to Anissa's questions, is about academic support services, like ALAC tutoring, the Writing Center, and recitations. Will all of this still be in full effect, albeit virtually?
Yeah, I would say yes. Prabhat, do you want to respond?
Yes, all of those services.
Yes, all of those services will be available online.
Awesome. So, now I have two more questions from Anissa. So, is there a set reporting schedule from the institute about the positive tests found on campus to our campus community? And going off of that, is there, I know you mentioned-
I'll repeat that question. I'm not sure I heard it or understood it.
Sorry, I'll repeat it. Will, or will the institute be reporting the numbers of like positive test results to our community? And going off of that, is there a quantitative number? I know you mentioned there's gonna be a model which we're following to track how the cases are progressing. But is there a quantitative number at which we'll determine to close the institute and have everyone move offline?
I think two things. One, there is a thing called the basic transmission rate or infection rate, and this R sub T, and we'll monitor that. But the real determinant would be a question of how, quote unquote, "out of control" things may be getting in the larger community. But more importantly, our ability to quarantine, but particularly isolate COVID cases, and how that plays, as well as taking care of those students. Because if they are quarantined, and especially those who are isolated, that means they have COVID. And so we want to be able to monitor their health, as well as provide services, such as feeding them, you know, providing food and so forth, assuming that they're not so ill as to be hospitalized. And so, we have a number of designated rooms, and it really is more of how many people would be quarantined, how many of them can be quarantined in place versus being moved to a special quarantine space. And so it's a judgment that we'll make relative to our capacity to care for the students who need to be cared for. And so that's something we'll monitor on a regular basis. As far as COVID cases on the campus, we have to report any COVID positive case to the New York State Department of Health. And when that happens, they tend to tell people anyway. But we're not looking, we want to be careful that we preserve people's privacy as much as possible. But we'll report what we need to report, and we're not trying to hide anything. But we want to preserve people's privacy. And just as we have designated quarantine and isolation spaces, they're not in our plan, because again, we want to preserve people's privacy. Dr. Lawrence, do you want to speak to that at all?
Yeah, I think it's always been our policy to communicate with the students if there are cases on campus. But again, no names will be used. We're not gonna, you know, mention where they are, as Dr. Jackson has pointed out, to try to preserve the students', you know, privacy. But yes, we'll let other students know. In fact, it's something I want to do because it'll remind us if we're all behaving, right? Because if everybody wears masks, if everybody stays six feet apart, if everybody, you know, cleanses, washes their hands, there will be no COVID cases. That's-
And you don't go hang out in any local bars.
Correct. However, as you see in Florida, 35-year-olds and under have been going to bars, and guess what happens? So, we'll know if people, because if everybody follows our protocols, there'll be zero cases. But we don't, we, some people will at times not follow our protocols exactly. We'll have a few cases, but we hope to limit it to a few.
That makes sense. And then the last question from Anissa was, Governor Cuomo recently stated that malls and gyms will be unable to open without the use of HEPA filters. Are there considerations to allocate resources to install filtration systems in similar places at RPIs such as the Mueller Center, for example?
Claude, let me let Claude Brown speak to that, the vice president for administration.
We are looking at all the mechanical ventilation systems. And one of the, the steps that we are taking in our restart plan for every building is to replace the filters. In circumstances where we can install a higher efficiency filter within the design characteristics of the system, we are doing so.
Perfect. Well, those are all the questions I had, so thank you so much for this opportunity and thank you for the time.
No, thank you, and be safe. Stay safe.
Thanks.
So, Dr. Jackson, the next up is one of our student athletes. She's a member of the women's lacrosse team and also a member of the Student Athletic Advisory Committee Executive Board, Liz Brady, class of 2021.
Hi, Dr. Jackson. Thank you for allowing me to be on this call today. So after speaking to a number of student athletes, many have expressed a concern in regard to the alternating semesters between sophomores and juniors being on campus. And one of those was how will both the sophomores and the freshmen fit on campus in the spring? If in the fall, the freshmen are gonna be spread out throughout the campus?
Well, let me sort of speak to that a little bit. It's true that the density will increase as we go into the spring. And, but then we'll also be looking at how that gets balanced out about how many upperclassmen we can accommodate on the campus. But with that, we do expect somewhat higher density. But we would still look to have some of the shared facilities, the bathrooms, to be de-densified. And we'll do more testing to keep up with that and be more stringent with the protocols. Peter, I don't know if you want to make a comment about that, or Claude?
Yeah, I would agree, Dr. Jackson. Just, you know, we're gonna learn a lot in the fall. And Elizabeth, I think we'll ask for just a little patience as we assess, as Dr. Jackson says, you know, how things work. And as Dr. Lawrence has been saying, you know, we are continuing to monitor the flow of the pandemic across the country and obviously back in the capital region. So, you know, we do hope that there's the ability to have higher density, which we also have been doing some research for additional housing in the area, which I know Vice President Rounds has been leading, and his staff have been really working hard to make sure we can accommodate any student who is interested in housing we want to accommodate, so.
Right. And so we have been looking for more housing in the region. Claude, would you like to comment?
Yes, ma'am. What we are doing today is risk-informed. And a great deal of what we will be doing going into the spring is evaluating what we learned during this fall semester. Not only what we learned, but perhaps what others have learned. We realize, as you have articulated, that we need to put more beds online and to accommodate the plan that Dr. Jackson outlined. So as a result, we do have a plan to increase the density from a risk-informed perspective if necessary, and also to look for additional beds that are currently not within our inventory. And all that is one of our priorities as we go forward. But this fall semester will give us a great deal of intelligence as we go forward.
So, let me kind of summarize. We're starting out in a very conservative manner for the fall. We expect to learn a lot. We hope that there'll be greater mitigation of the disease by the time we start in the spring, which is also, and that will be coming closer to the end of the flu season. And we would urge everybody to have a flu shot this year, everyone. But we also are looking assiduously for additional housing that's not within our usual housing stock. And so there could be more of a spread of students beyond the normal housing that we would place our students in.
Okay, thank you for that. And another question that students are having was further away semesters, other online semester? They're wondering if tuition would remain at the same price even though they're not on campus because they don't have the same access as the students who would be on campus?
Well, the students who are on campus will, you know, have a fairly stringent experience. But our intention is to deliver the same quality of pedagogical instruction as we would normally provide. In addition, there are a lot of embedded courses with having things in the hybrid mode, with having exams at different times, with beefing up what is embedded in the online courses, which we are going to be doing more of. And so, our anticipation is to keep the tuition where it is, net of any financial aid that students would have.
Right. Thank you. And then another main concern was for the rising juniors. This is a very, like, kind of strictly student-athlete-based question. But the student athletes who are rising juniors who compete for spring sports got their season cut for the 2020 season due to COVID. And now with this incoming plan, they're supposed to be away during their spring semester, taking away both their sophomore and junior seasons of playing, which would mean that they only play their freshman and senior year. And for them, like, playing a sport is a big part of their experience here at RPI. And so, there was a big question of whether or not there'd be an exception for them to be allowed to be, if they do like online classes, but still be able to compete.
Not if we decide we're not gonna have the sports. But let me let Lee speak to that, and I'll come back to your question.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson and Liz. Thank you for the question. We talked yesterday with parents and student athletes about the, what we refer to as the eligibility clock. And what you just described was within a four-year or eight-semester timeframe. But it's broader than that. It's 10 semesters. And I've been speaking to parents about this most of the day and a lot yesterday, in that there are other options. And it's not just your freshman or your, I'm sorry, your sophomore, your junior year of athletic experience. We do have other options, and I'm more than happy to go into more detail with you about those. Related to that is that we are, back to your point about online experiences, as you well know better than anybody, we've been doing a lot of virtual work with our student athletes, including incoming. And we find it to be very comprehensive and very effective. And we're now working on that for the fall. So we plan to be even more rigorous than we were before. So, we will address that and have more detail for you relative to the eligibility piece.
Okay, thank you very much for that. And just like one last question. If by January there is a vaccine or a drastic drop in the number of cases in the area and just in the country in general, is this plan that's kind of in place right now subject to change?
Thank you for that question. The plan is always subject to change, both ways, depending upon what the overall public health situation is. And that's strictly how we're driven, is, you know, what is the overall public health situation? Because our goal is to keep you as safe as we can, and to keep all of our community members. I know how important athletics are to our athletes. You know, I was not a great athlete, but I enjoy athletics. And most people don't know, I was the one who built the East Campus Athletic Village because I feel that athletics are a critical part of the growth and development of our students, both the intercollegiate athletics as well as intramural. And so, it pains me for us to be, have to make the kind of decisions that we've made. But in the end, this is not a normal time, and this is a pandemic. And so our focus is trying to, is on delivering the best education within as safe a context as we can. And so, I appreciate your questions, and we're gonna be looking to see, you know, what, how things may change in the spring. I'm as hopeful as you are that there's a vaccine, I'll be the first in line. So, thank you.
Right. Well, thank you very much for your time, and I much appreciate it.
No, thank you. Appreciate it.
So, the next questions, Dr. Jackson, are from one of our student leaders of the Red and White Student Organization, Gitika Verma, from the class of 2021.
Hi, Dr. Jackson. Thank you once again for allowing me to be here and ask questions. On behalf of the Red and White Organization, as well as the other students on campus, I've gathered a few questions that I'd like to address today. The first is actually about the shuttle system. So this is a system that many students on campus use, whether they be on campus or off campus. And now that we are gonna be de-intensifying campus, I understand there will be a few number of people on campus. But the people, number of people still using shuttles may still be decently high. So there was a question regarding whether or not the institute would be adding more shuttles, or how would that shuttle system be accommodated so that fewer people can still be on shuttles, but they can still be available for the students?
Well, what I can tell you are two things. One, we're gonna provide whatever the shuttle services are that are needed. You know, the specifics of how the routes are gonna be structured and so on will obviously be driven by where the students live. The second is, there are actual New York State health and safety protocols relative to bus services and that kind of transportation. And so, you know, we will follow those and then probably, and I know we're putting stringent stringencies in place. But let me let Claude speak to that again. Claude?
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Yes, we will follow all those safety protocols, and we've added a few of our own to be even more safe. We are gonna socially distance our existing shuttle buses to make sure that they are safe for transportation. But we're also gonna employ additional buses to help us with the demand. So we intend to run the shuttle service to provide transportation, and we intend to, in concert with the Safe Ride, continue to have an option for the Safe Ride service.
Thank you so much.
If we end up changing the configuration of where students are housed and where they live, then our shuttle routes will be adjusted accordingly.
Okay, thank you. My next question is actually related a little bit more to the specifics. I know we're not going into too much specifics today. But in terms of housing, especially for the incoming students, a lot of students have, who are RA's or who are incoming students, have expressed interest in trying to like know a little bit more about where they would be housed. Is there a concrete plan that the Student Living and Learning has been working on or that you can speak to?
Well, I think it's best to go through Student Living and Learning because it comes upon the overall registration and that kind of thing. But Peter, would you like to speak to that a little?
Yeah, I would just say, first of all, Gitika, thank you for participating, and it's a great question. I know Dean Lawler in Living Learning will continue to communicate with our RA and our learning assistant staff, you know, as we keep just everyone as well informed as possible. The freshman housing closed last Friday, and they're doing assignments literally as we speak. And then shortly thereafter, we'll start to communicate with you. So you all, so, you know, the staff, the student staff, who will play a crucial role this fall. I just want to, you know, amplify that. You'll play a crucial role, and we appreciate the role that any returning student staff will play. You'll have as much information and you'll have a lot of extensive training on the competencies we'll need you to do in terms of supporting students, as we talked about with mental health, but also PPE and, you know, kind of monitoring the activities within the community and building community. So those are-
Making yourself safe.
Exactly, exactly.
And my last question is actually regarding the multiple exception process we talked about. I know there was a question earlier about students who have gotten exempt from Arch or who are gonna be graduating in the fall, or students even who say maybe in the freshman or senior cohort and are invited back to campus, but cannot, but do not actually want to come back to campus. Do we have a timeline of when and who they should contact for like exceptions and just getting more information about that?
Yeah. Peter, would you like to speak to it, and Prabhat?
Yeah, I think, you know, generally I would say any student with an individual question. So as you heard Dr. Lawrence talk about, if it's a health-related question, I would start with the Health Center. If it's an academic question, I would start with either their school advising office, or if they have a question that kind of crosses over, maybe they'll talk to their class dean. But that's why we have the class structure, and we have the class deans working very closely with our academic partners. And that information is generally shared. You know, we'll pass on information from the class dean to a school hub, or the school hub will tell us, you know, hey, we've got a student situation we want to work with you on. But I would say we have a pretty strict set of criteria, as you've heard. We're not looking to make exceptions. We do know there are some extenuating circumstances and vulnerable populations. So just keep that in mind. You know, it's, we're in a much less flexible period. Even though we want to provide a level of individual attention, we are in the middle of a pandemic, and we need to, you know, have pretty strict protocols.
Thank you for that. I just wanted to say, I know there's a lot of details that will go, you know, into this plan of actually bringing so many students back on campus. But thank you for all the effort that you all have been putting in, and the town hall's been a great way to learn more about what you guys have been doing. So thank you for your time.
Well, thank you for your questions and thank everyone, because actually it causes us to sharpen our plan and what we do. And even though what you see is the plan, behind it is an implementation plan that is huge, that has a- that has a lot of, a lot of detail. It's very long.
Dr. Jackson, the next questions are coming from the president of the Interfraternity Council, Chris Van der Louw from the class of 2021.
Hey, I just want to say I have a hard stop at about five minutes to two.
Okay, so we have three more after Chris.
All right. Good afternoon, Dr. Jackson. I've got a few questions for you. The health and safety of students is RPI's priority as we pursue returning to campus. And the plan you presented is obviously indicative of that. With the Alumni InterGreek Council, we were able to develop a comprehensive safety and de-densification plan for Greek housing that shares those same priorities. And, you know, we, we referenced New York State guidelines and Dr. Lawrence's suggestions. However, requiring that Greek houses close in the fall calls into question the state of cleanliness and safety in the off-campus housing they would occupy. And I say that knowing that the off-campus facilities may not necessarily be held to the same high standard of our on-campus living or the standards that we've set for our Greek facilities. I also say that knowing that the institute is, is, you know, still searching for, for housing and beds for students, despite, you know, Greek housing having hundreds of beds available.
We're not searching for housing for the fall.
Okay. So for the fall, where should the 381 Greek students that were planning to live in a fraternity or sorority this fall go to find the safe, clean housing with the oversight? Such as that offered by on-campus and ideally Greek housing?
I would say two things to you. We looked ourselves very carefully at the Greek housing and decided that given our protocols and standards and how we think we have to operate rents later in the fall, that, that we could not accommodate having the Greek houses open. The other thing is that I would recommend that you speak with the off-campus commons and the Greek Life Commons staff through Peter. Because as Peter has said, they're going to be working to help all of our students find the appropriate housing. But the third comment I would make is a challenge to you to help us. Since you say that you've worked on these kinds of protocols, that you take it as a commitment to your fellow Greeks to work with them in living wherever they live, to implement health and safety and cleanliness and disinfecting protocols to keep them as safe as possible. And the second is a request that you work with student life folks, particularly with the dean of students and those in Greek life, to create and to develop creative ways to develop your rush programs and to ask for the help you need with those, as well as to stay in touch with those whom you rushed, who will be sophomores. And, and we're prepared to help you with that. And so the decision is firm, but we also want to work with you on alternatives.
Absolutely. And, you know, I, I have full confidence in, in the plans that we've pieced together and the Greek community's ability to execute on those plans. And, you know. So I, I have one, one follow-up with that kind of thing. Given that the houses will then be unoccupied in the fall, many of our member chapters have discussed with me their operating costs, which are up to and sometimes exceed $50,000 per semester. The lack of any revenue whatsoever may result in potential foreclosure for some of the smaller chapters. Will the institute be taking any actions to alleviate that substantial financial burden? And are there any other revenue sources that those houses can look to?
Well, first of all, as you know, we do not own most of the houses. The corporations, the Greek corporations own those houses. So they're not ours. However, we have created and started a Greek fund that the chair of the board has contributed to, that I am contributing to, et cetera. And so you probably had the opportunity to talk with us about whether those funds in an emergency would need to be used in certain particular circumstances. And so I would urge you to, to think about that. But also if you are a community, that presumably you do have dues that people pay and that that would be contributory to helping to defray the expenses of keeping the unoccupied housing going.
Well, yeah, thank you for answering my questions.
The next set of questions, Dr. Jackson, are from Bryn Clarkson, who is the president of Pan-Helloic and also the class of 2021.
Hi, Dr. Jackson. I first thank you for inviting fraternity and sorority leadership to participate today. I'm going to keep this brief because I understand we only have a few minutes. But one of the main concerns that Greek life is facing besides the lack of housing in the fall is that we don't have a ton of support. I understand we have people from student life who are trying to help us, but without a dedicated Greek dean or Greek life commons. We, like the task force, hasn't been able to make a lot of implementation progress. We're trying to figure out rush somewhat on our own because everybody's dealing with coronavirus changes. So what will be RPI's plan in hiring a Greek dean and when will this happen?
Peter, you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I, you know, this is actually one of the things that was, you know, a challenge for all of us. And I know any of us who addressed the furlough of staff, you know, we had to reduce the number to help us continue to address the mitigating circumstances. We are committed to, and we've allocated or dedicated a person, Morgan, who has joined us as one of our residential deans to help support the Greek Life Commons in the interim. And I know Dean Lawler and Dean Atkar are committed, like me, to bringing in staff to support. And we're going to continue to do that to make sure that you have the resources you need. It is, it is a challenging time and I, and I, you know, acknowledge that, but we're going to continue to work with you. And as we were, you know, as Chris's question alluded to and Dr. Jackson commented on, we're committed to working in partnership to support the Greek community and we'll continue to do that every single day. So I appreciate your question. It's, it's a, it's a challenge, but we're working on it.
Thank you. And I have one brief follow-up to that. With just the help and support from staff and the conversations we've been having, we haven't seen a ton of action or a ton of resources that have specifically helped us. So what is RPI's plan for dedicating resources to support us at crucial times throughout the year for our community-like recruitment time?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. You know, let's talk more about that because I know up until the point, you know, Wendy was a terrific resource throughout the past year. And unfortunately that, you know, we had to cut that short as we went, you know, in a distributed way. But I think we've had really good conversations with all of you, have continued to work with you on a pretty regular basis. And, you know, we also want to make sure we, we, we spread our resources as much as possible to the total student community. So we're committed to doing that, making sure you have the support. And, you know, we'll continue those dialogues with, with Travis, with Dean Lawler and obviously with, with myself. So at any point, I appreciate you raising the concern that you feel like you're not getting the support. We'll certainly work to step that up where we can.
One more thing with housing. I know you talked a little bit about this earlier with off-campus commons, but can you talk a little more to how RPI will be providing support to students who need to find safe off-campus housing in the next six weeks? As Chris mentioned, there's at least 380 Greek students, as well as I'm imagining some juniors who are taking the fall off, trying to do this. And I know the off-campus commons is probably a little overwhelmed with all of this. So is there some resources that could be sent out or something that could help us help our community find these places to live?
Yeah, we'll post some additional information. I know there's been some additional information or initial information that was put out originally when we talked on June 10th. But I'll double check with our staff in Living Learning and the Greek Life Commons, as well as the off-campus commons to figure out what additional communication we can put out to all of the Greek community and any other students searching for housing. So we'll, we'll do that, you know, later this afternoon and see what's already there. And then make sure you have some additional information. Most likely we'll put it on the FAQ section of the COVID test, COVID website, just so it's in one common place, but.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Bryn.
Dr. Jackson, two more student leaders. The first is from our multicultural leadership council, Samuel Harrison.
Hello, Dr. Jackson. Can you guys hear me? Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you for taking the questions that I have gathered from some of the students. So the first question is for students with dietary restrictions that are proving difficult to find meals in the past, will there be exceptions to their 19 meal plan requirement?
Will there be exceptions to what?
The 19 meal plan requirement.
Peter, I'm, I'm sure that, you know, we'll be working to accommodate students that have special needs. We always do.
Yeah. In, in fact, I know that app in the, in the, in the spring and summer, when we had students on campus included, you know, the ability for students to indicate any food, any food challenges in my face, you know, dietary challenges in my face. So that still exists. I know Claude, Claude's put that in place to make sure that students have all of their dietary needs met.
Okay. Next question I have is in regards to upperclassmen that have relied on campus housing in the past. So I know you're saying housing will be used for freshmen, but is there any percentages that you could give that would kind of show how much housing would be available for upperclassmen that may be able to use it?
What I think is they look to make the housing assignments that Peter talked about, you know, we'll have a better sense. And on our first focus is on students who have specific vulnerabilities, where it would be better for them to live in university-controlled housing. And, and so that's, that's where we are. And then after that, we would look at whether there's additional housing available to.
Okay. Could you give some guidance for when the current students within the arts right now will be able kind of to return to campus and given the, the end of their arch classes and the start of the fall semester? Just kind of a short timeline.
It is a pretty short timeline. As, as I think I said earlier, we're going to, part of that will be predicated on the testing and the date when we assign testing, but we'll communicate that directly to the, it'll be, that will specifically go to each individual student. But we'll also communicate kind of a timeframe to each class cluster.
Okay. Um, I have two more quick questions. For, could there be a point of clarification around the current architecture students that are the 2017 cohort that are in arts right now? Are they classified as juniors or seniors?
Rabat Hajela, can you answer that question, please?
I'm sorry, Jackson. It's the fourth year students in architecture who have the equivalent status of juniors.
Okay, thank you. And then lastly, how will tuition impact co-term of students that relied on TA positions to help cover some of their costs? Will there be any assistance provided in their financial aid package?
Well, my understanding is that the financial aid that students would have as undergrads would continue into that co-term program. But John Wexler, can you speak to that briefly?
Yes, Sam. If you, if, if the way the co-term works is that any rent, or financially that you were getting as an undergrad that will continue into your graduate years upon being accepted and approved for it. So it will be very much the same.
Okay. And do you, one last thing, do you know if work-study positions will be offered for the fall?
If there, there will be work-study for those students that are on campus, you know, in their role, yes. But they could be slimmed down because of the social distancing and the roles could be different or the, there could be fewer of them available because of social distancing, but their work-study is, will be available. And you'll just have to, when you come back to campus, investigate on campus what's available and what, for this upcoming year.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson.
Thank you.
And Dr. Jackson, our last set of questions are from the president of the Graduate Student Council, Neha Kation.
Hello, Dr. Jackson. Thank you so much for addressing concerns related to the graduate student population. I do understand we have time constraints, so I'll just quickly pick four questions, which I think is really important at this point. And we'll go from there. My first one is just a more, a bit of clarification. I went through the final return policy on the RPI website and see a plan outlined on how students and faculty would function, how classes would be conducted. Could you please help us understand how the plan is incorporating the TAs, given all the responsibilities they would be required to undertake, and how graduate students would continue after Thanksgiving break? This is my first question.
Rabat?
So there are multiple questions in there. Let, let me start in the reverse order. I think classes after Thanksgiving will all be online. So graduate classes, much like undergraduate classes, will be online and that's how it's going to be concluded. The semester is going to be concluded. Research labs will continue to function under the existing protocols that we have in place. With the, with all of the social distancing, with all of the requirements as to who can be in the lab at what time shifts if necessary. And we'll continue to function in that way. Was there a third question? I'm sorry.
Second one was like, how are we trying to incorporate the TAs, given all responsibilities they would require to undertake? Because I see plans for students, classes, and how the faculty will be doing. But I couldn't find, like, we couldn't find plans for how TAs will be like working or how they can be incorporated.
Right. So teaching assistants, again, just like faculty consulting hours, all TA sessions will be conducted remotely. We will not allow in-person interactions. If there are tutorial classes that TAs will sometimes conduct, they will be done under the same protocol of social distancing and in those classrooms that have been specially marked for that purpose.
Thank you. My second question is, the institute's current standing is that all graduate, current graduate students will be supported in some way or the other, say by TA positions or internally funded RA positions. However, there has been substantial elimination of internally funded positions such as the Haas fellowships. Can you please clarify how all grad students will be supported at RPI?
Please answer that, Rabat, quickly because I'm already running to another meeting.
Right. So, I mean, we, just like we did over the summer semester, we collected all of the information as to who the students are that need to be supported, what the internal sources of funding were that supported them, and we, we actually did what was required and necessary. I, I, we were doing exactly the same thing. Another analysis will be done as to who needs to be supported. And we, we will go forward. We will be taking in all of the information and processing it as the semester rolls around.
So just keeping time in mind, I'll skip the third one and just the last one. We have seen that the current situation has impacted degree timeline of graduate students, especially those who perform vet benchmark or field work, either domestically or internationally. Could you please help us understand the plans undertaken by RPI to support students, especially senior graduate students, to ensure their timely graduation without undue mental stress?
I, I can address that. And Robert, if you want to jump in, you can as well. But certainly one of the priorities that we have set aside for bringing research back to campus in a very staged manner includes graduate students whose work is being impacted, those who are close to graduation, how do we put them on a path to completion as early as possible? So that is a priority in our plans. And Robert, if you want to add something to that.
Yeah, I'll just add two things. So certainly as Professor Jada says, students who are within six months of anticipated completion will be accelerated back onto campus. And the other thing which the associate professor of graduate studies dean, as Stan Dunn has made very clear, is that we're not going to restrict anybody's graduation based on timelines. You know, clearly this has put a delay in some people's research, if it's experimental research. And Dean Dunn has made it clear that there will not be a, the timelines will be extended accordingly.
Further questions? I think that's.
I think that's it, Dr. Jackson.
So it's, it's clear that there are those, there are still lingering questions. And I think what we can do is the following, that why don't we let you all, let the plan soak with you? And then in about a week or two's time, we'll do another session like this. In the meantime, I would urge you to get in touch with the specific offices, portfolio offices for the very specific questions that you have. And, and we'll try to answer and or accommodate them as much as we can. But then I will come back so that we can, in fact, talk some more. And I didn't, we didn't realize that the session would go for the full, for two hours. But I am happy to continue to talk with you, as is each member of my team. And, and so I want to thank all of you for your very thoughtful. And, and so I want to thank all of you for your very thoughtful questions today. And I look forward to talking to you again soon. Thank you very much. Bye.